Some visitors here, Rich Megan and Bill Burdick are here to visit from the veterans memorial green to talk about silver aids and stuff like that.
Of all the things that the committee has done that are noticeable, over at the green, I'd like to report on a couple of things that are very less noticeable. Thanks to Eagle Eye Carol Jones, she picked up that a couple of the names here on Columbia were misspelled wrong. And in checking, she was absolutely correct. And it has been corrected. But the irony of it is, when I went over to the Columbia at the green, the names were spelled correct. Thank God, because I could not see, I could not see taking down that $10,000 piece of glass to, you know, correct the names, but they have, I think one of them was Liebowitz. I don't remember which other one was misspelled. Yeah, you know, it's nice to see that people come in here and they look at this.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. All the time.
And then also, back in May, John Beveridge Jr. showed up at the town clerk's office, wondering why his name was not on the Vietnam wing of the memorial. And he was absolutely correct. And then in doing more checking, there was a Paul Savitski's name that was also missing from the Vietnam side of the, and I am not happy to report that both John Beveridge Jr. and Paul Savitski's name have been added. I would like to, myself and the committee, Phil Shaler of Digital Signs and Graphics, he donated his time and his material, did not charge the committee one dime for correcting the names here at the Columbia and adding John Beveridge's name and Paul Savitski's name over to the, over to the, alright. Bill and I met yesterday over there and we completely cleaned the inside of the Korea and the inside of the Vietnam. It's amazing how those spiders get in there. Yeah. You know, the hardest, the hardest thing about correcting those names over there was this guy behind me, it took us three months to find the key. He had the key all the time. So now, now the town has a key and the committee has a key. Gina's cataloged it, so, okay. We're on to, right now, we're still working to get names of veterans so that we can place them on the bricks. We now really need to get the names, but we also get, need to get the, the branch of service that they served in. And we're looking for anybody who is not already recognized up there from World War II, Korea, or Vietnam. So they would be from September 3rd of 45 to June 24th of 50, then from February 1st of 55 to December 21st of 65, and then from May 8th of 75 to present. Please call Jonathan Castner here at the town hall, or please give me a call at 860-526-5270. We have approximately 55 names, okay? Seven of which are active duty right now. And it's very important that when these active servicemen and women get discharged, that we know, so as soon as they get discharged, we can honor them. I've also in contact with Mike Burrell up at the, up at the high school. And so anybody who enters the service from, from Deep River, he gives me the name. I think Carolyn Raymond was one of them, and there was Kathy, Kathy Kellenbach, her son's gonna be going. Yeah, but I guess he's, he's been delayed because of some funding issues or something going on.
They gotta push forward though.
Kathy, yeah, Justin is down there now. He's in basic training.
Okay. Alright, so, yeah. So like I said, it's important that we get the, the names of the students that enter, and it's even more important that we get the names when they get honorably discharged, so that we could, we could get their names on the bricks. And one of the things that I think we're looking at is, how do we recognize? And the thing that we're leaning on right now is we're gonna get a bronze marker, okay? And we're gonna put a bronze marker down on the platform when we go and we do it. The reason we're thinking about doing a bronze marker, because it'll, it'll stick up about a half an inch. And that way there, people, if we just go with a flat granite marker, people, people won't know if it's there, but if we go with a bronze marker, it sticks up a half an inch. People will see that and they'll, they'll go over there and they'll look. The biggest sticking point right now is, what are we gonna say on that marker? You know? And, and also what we're looking at right now, we're looking at maybe having the Connecticut Department of Veteran Affairs pay, pay for this marker.
That'd be great.
So that, that would be nice. That would save the committee, that would save the committee some, okay?
Yeah, that'd be good. You know, it might be helpful, maybe not, and it's only gonna be a little bit helpful right now, because I can't remember the date, but in conjunction with the governor and the lieutenant governor's offices, there's a ceremony going to be held here at the town hall honoring Vietnam era folks that, from Deep River. There should be invitations, should have already gone out. I think it's in December, so if they haven't gone out, they're going to be going out. So everybody from Deep River that's, that we were able to compile and find is being invited, and they may know some folks.
And another thing.
Apparently, apparently I haven't gotten the invitation, so.
Another thing we're talking about doing is some kind of a ceremony. This is, the way we're going right now, this is definitely gonna get done next year.
Great.
Okay? And what we're looking is maybe have a little ceremony and stuff. Right now, I'm looking at the dates, November is too iffy, you know? And what I'm thinking of, maybe next year at, on Deep River Day, we could have some kind of.
Oh, that's a great idea.
You know? A lot of people in town. September, the weather is, is better and stuff. You know, I don't wanna go selling hot dogs and take away from the merchants and stuff, but just, you know, have some kind of a ceremony there and, you know, dedicate it.
I think that's a good idea. There are a lot of folks in town, and get them over to the green.
Okay. So I'm gonna sit back now and wait till we get to Concerned Citizens.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your service, both of you. And it's very important that it was on TV tonight, or it's gonna be on TV, so that, you know, if there's, get more people to come in and look at it and look at it over there and get the word, get the word out.
It is amazing how many people, visitors come in, or grandchildren, or great grandchildren come in and try to find their family up there.
And like I says, thank God the names were spelled right. Oh God, that's a $10,000 piece of glass. It was not gonna come down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your part. Good.
And Angus, thank you for all the help you've been giving Post 61, American Legion. You've been very, very helpful to us.
Thanks, it's my pleasure. Item number four on the agenda is a discussion of sidewalk plow purchase. And this is really just to bring you up to speed and to, and we'll talk to Board of Finance later on tonight. But it's not a snow plow, so it's sidewalk plow as much as it's a snow blowing machine.
Oh, okay.
But it's big enough, it's got a heat, I don't know if it's heated, but it's got an enclosed cab. It's got a dispenser on the back of it that will dispense of salt or whatever we want to, materials we wanna put on the sidewalks. It's large enough to do our sidewalks, but not too large to do our sidewalks. The machine that we have now.
This is a ride-in thing?
It's a ride-in.
Not a walk-in.
The intent really is something that I've wanted to do for a long time, is to plow the sidewalks all the way through, all the way through, not all the way through town, but certainly all of Main Street.
Right.
You know, it's, to just do them in a certain sections doesn't make any sense. We don't have an ordinance that, that says that people need to, I don't wanna say that out loud, but we don't have an ordinance that requires folks to take care of their, maintain their sidewalks. So I think in a town that's as walking, if we're trying to be encouraging walking, we certainly should do our best to keep the sidewalks clear. We have found a 2013 machine that we can get for about, right now, the negotiation is at about $9,000. So it's.
Well, I think it would be, it would be a good thing just to save the wear and tear of the bodies of the guys that are shoveling and snowmobbing and out there in the cold and all that anyway.
Yeah. This is, this is something that would be kept up at the town garage.
More than likely, we'll keep it at WPCA, because it's closer and they could just drive it down the hill and do the sidewalks from there, as opposed to having to trailer it when there's obviously adverse conditions on the roads and stuff like that, so. That's what, you know, we do have one now, but it's, it's just a tiny plow and it doesn't, doesn't really satisfy the need, it doesn't allow for us to be able to do as much. And really, the intent is to do all of the, all of the main streets, so we can enjoy it. So that's really just news, there's no action to take on that. And hopefully, we'll talk tonight with the Board of Finance and get that forward. Audience of citizens, anyone? Oh, we have, before you guys go, let me introduce, we have Sean Davis, one of our local Boy Scouts, who's here to observe a meeting. I'm sorry we don't have more people here, and we're on the, on the agenda for you to...
He's here to observe? I thought he was going to do a speech.
If I thought about it, you could've led us in the pledge of allegiance for the meeting, but, but welcome, and thanks for, you know.
Yes, thanks for coming.
Look forward to you doing it. Good to have you here.
Thank you. I need some support. American Legion Post 61 of Deep River wants all residents of Deep River to know that the sign in front of Deep River Hardware Store about the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade is very, very misleading. Post 61 does not support this parade, nor will it participate in this parade. We would like all Deep River residents to know that Post 61 will be conducting its own Veterans Day ceremony at the Veterans Town Green on Monday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. and hope all who can attend will attend and support the Deep River, the Deep River veterans. Okay?
Well, you guys traditionally have something there at 11 o'clock.
Yes, we have. For many, many, many years.
That's, that's my recollection. And in recent years, you're over at the elementary school?
We're at the elementary school at 1:30. We do our, we do our arts and essay contest over there at 1:30. 11 o'clock, we usually do a very, it's not a very big ceremony, it's maybe 20 minutes to a half an hour, we do a ceremony over there. But that sign over there is very, very misleading. I mean, it says, I mean, we can't control what the veterans of Deep River want to do, but we're just hoping they join us at the Deep River Post 61 at the green and inviting all residents of Deep River Police to come and support the Deep River veterans.
Yeah, individuals, I mean, it's an individual choice, which we, you know.
Like you and I have talked, that sign basically should say Chessex, Chester and Essex, because it's, it's not supported by Deep River. You know, it's very, very, very misleading.
Well, yeah, we have to be a little careful with that. It's not supported by the organized Deep River vets.
It's not supported by Post 61.
Yeah, by Post 61. And that's, that's the important part for me. You know, we talked at length about, Bill, Bill was in here, we talked at length about, about having that parade. And we certainly could've done it on Saturday, could've done it on Sunday, and we could've done it on Monday.
They were, they were just, I ran into the committee chairman back in September, coming out of Deep River Hardware Store, I'm the children and youth officer for Post 61, so I organize a lot of things between the elementary school, the junior high, and the high school. And I asked him, I says, what's going on with the Veterans Day Parade? And he says, Veterans Day, November 11th. And I says, Toby, that's a school day, it can't happen. You know, Post 61 is, we have our programs and stuff going on. And his attitude was to me, too bad. And then we sent Bill there, and he tried to, and they, they were just, they were just adamant that it was gonna be on November 11th and, you know.
Well, it's a shame. It was, it was, it had evolved into a nice parade.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we can pick it up again when we come to an agreement, when we have more time to have a conversation about it. But, you know, thanks for keeping us in the loop and for letting everybody know it's, that we will have a ceremony on the green.
Definitely, definitely. I hope as many Deep River residents and veterans can come out and partake in, in our ceremony. Because like I said, this is, God, I've been a member of Legion for, I don't know, 27, 28 years, and this has been going on as long as I've been a member. You know, it's, it's no big deal, it's a very, very, very short ceremony. I think a little embarrassing, usually seeing, because, oh, yeah.
Yeah, of course, yes.
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's a, it's a program that's set up in the American Legion book. There's a specific guideline that we go by for, for Veterans Day, okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for the information.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone have anything? No? Just a quick update, the Route 80 paving project seems to be just about wrapped up. I think they're gonna paint some lines.
I see there's markings where the stop lines are gonna be put more.
I think they'll be painting the yellow lines and doing, doing all that kind of work. They're going to be putting rumble strip up the middle of it.
Okay.
Which, it's a wonderful, it's a really interesting experience to get an email that says, we're putting up rumble strips, give us a call if you have any questions or concerns. So I call them and say, I don't really like rumble strips that much, I understand they're important, so maybe around the corners and stuff, it's great, but they're not, they're pretty lousy where people live.
Yeah.
And, and he said, well, thank you very much, but we're putting in rumble strips. Thanks for asking.
I can remember, I'm going back, probably 20 years ago, when the state put the rumble strips on Route 9. The people in Essex were up in, up in arms. I'll tell you what, I'm glad I do not live on Route 80, because.
Yeah, me too.
Those people that, that still go, when those people take those rumble strips, they're, they're wild.
Stay in your lane, and there are, there are positives, there are positives to that. You know, there's no question about that.
I don't know if they, you know, they put rumble strips in, I don't, down by the Deep River Chester area of 145.
Yes.
And they came, and they eliminated some of them, and I don't know why that was eliminated.
Probably.
Because of neighbors, maybe.
Probably people complaining, yeah.
So.
It's a shame that they don't really give us an opportunity.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't.
Yeah. So anyway, that project is just about wrapped up. We're, we're running around town doing patching on our own. Working hard to get the end of Bushy Hill patched and paved, at least it's the last section of town, it's really falling apart. So we're gonna try to get that. We're trying to get over at West Bridge.
West Bridges.
Yeah, that's, that's, that really is overdue.
Yeah.
We're trying to get up there. At the same time, we're gonna do some, some more work up at the Winthrop Cemetery, or not the Winthrop Cemetery, sorry, the.
Oh, my fault.
Yeah.
Have we patched the southern end of Westbrook Road? I saw they were out there.
They're out there doing that. I expect that we'll, we'll see, see the folks out there, either the end, sometime in the next week or so. You know, they've, they've cut it already, so it's just a matter of pulling it up and patching it. And that'll be done. And that's, that's where we're at, we're at, we're, you know, all our trucks are being, getting worked on right now to get ready for winter.
Getting ready, yeah.
And that's what I have, so.
Okay.
There's nothing else.
The only thing I'd like to say is, you know, this has been an ongoing discussion about speeding in town.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know what the answer is. I don't think the town knows what the answer is, I don't think the state knows what the answer is. You know, we have two constables and the state police, how often have we said, where's a cop when you need one? You know, there is a speeding problem in town, and until some rumble strips or whatever can be put in, my, my personal suggestion is that anybody that listens and is here makes an effort to go as close to the speed limit as possible. And if somebody behind you doesn't like it, and they have to slow down because you're going the speed limit, then mission accomplished. Whether it's a truck coming into town, or FedEx truck, or, or somebody that's like to work, or whatever, if we make, and it's easy for me to say, because we all speed, but if we make an effort to slow down in town, then ultimately, anybody that's behind you is gonna slow down too. And then, and the main road is 154, you know, in any residential area. And it is a problem, it definitely is a problem, but short of some miraculous fix for speeding in town, I think we all need to just, if we think of it, try to maintain reasonable speeds, and hopefully, everybody will slow down because of it.
I recently had a conversation with Mike Vanello, and I guess the state put up a box in the telephone booth. He took me 40,000 cars a year to walk them down this.
Yeah, we have a lot of traffic.
It's a, it's a major road, and as much as we like to think that we can be Essex Village or Chester Village or whatever, we've got a main state road that goes right through the center of our town.
You know, and you can do, you can do what you want to with numbers, and that's, that's the interesting thing, you know? The, the results of that study had an average speed coming into town of 33 miles an hour. That's the average speed. And going out of town of 31 miles an hour. Now, we just bought a new machine and installed it up on the north end of town, coming into town. And it's only been up for about a month and a half, but one of the reasons we got that is because we can get information from that ourselves. And that, again, has an average speed of coming into town of 32 miles an hour. So there's no question, to get to an average, you've got higher and lower.
Yeah, yeah. I can say this, you could put a cop, you know, not only about speeding, but, you know, stop signs and stuff, you can put him out there, he can be out there for two hours, and nothing happens.
Oh, yeah.
He leaves, and two minutes after, he leaves.
And that's, and that's why I say, you know, we could have 10 people on the police force, and they're gonna miss this stuff, and it's gonna take, I believe, it's gonna take a public input to everybody make a conscious effort to try and slow down, and ultimately slow down those people that are going fast behind you.
Well, that'll certainly help.
Every little bit helps.
It's an old song. So we've got a poster out, slow down, you're moving too fast.
When I, when I come down from, from Winthrop, people, people don't like to follow me, because I, you know, you're six feet off of my, off of the.
You know, it is, it is interesting, when you come over that corner, the speed limit's 40, it turns to 30 right when you go over that hill. And I find myself, you can, I watch myself decelerate as I'm coming down that hill, because I'm 35, 34, 33. But it's hard to drive at the speed limit.
Yeah, it is.
We're used to hurrying up.
Yep.
I can remember, I'm going back, oh, wait, probably close to 25 years ago, Dick Smith took the same views that you guys are taking right now about the speeding in the center of town. And he went to the state, and he asked the state to lower the speed limit in the center of town from 30 to 25 miles an hour. No, they're not gonna do it.
We did the same thing.
Yeah.
And we went up there, went up there, you know, had the same conversation.
I heard Mike had, had a lead up there.
So we'll keep working, we'll keep doing our best.
Yep.
There's nothing else. Take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn at 6:55.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance, regular October meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on the agenda is the approval of September 2019 minutes.
I'll make motion when we approve the minutes, sir. Second.
All those in favor? Audience of citizens, seeing nor hearing any, I shall, we will move on. Treasurers report, I do not see Tommy here.
No, he stopped in today and asked me to hand these out, he wasn't sure if he was going to be able to make it, so.
We have two general funds now? What's the $100? I mean, what are we doing with $100 in another account?
We actually do, I think, we just, no, we're in the process of opening up an account at Liberty, so we can have a cash fund, so we, at times, we have a lot of cash here that we need to deposit.
Is that because of citizens?
Because citizens not, is not going to be here, rather than getting in a car and driving it to Essex or to wherever, we still have a bank across the street, and we've opened up a, or in the process of opening up a cash account, so that we can bring money there and transfer it to, over to citizens.
So that $100 is a placeholder?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Kind of like the town for checking?
Similar.
Two accounts now?
That, no, that's two accounts?
Yeah, this month there's two.
Oh, yeah.
The last month, there was only one.
That is probably exactly for that reason it will transfer over, that I think will transfer, but I have not spoken with Tom about that, so.
That makes tons of sense. One is it citizens, which goes away in November, next month.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Early in the month, or you don't know?
I don't remember one, I believe. Now, I also understand, and I have not had this verified yet, they're going to keep some of their offices there for, for the time being, but the bank itself will be closed.
And I would ask, what about the WPCA, if you know, this is, I should be asking this to Tom, but WPCA and the memorial fund account, both of which are citizens.
Those are some good questions, and we will ask Tom those questions, I just saw this, this afternoon.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I would guess that Pete's gonna have to talk with Tom about that.
There's also municipal energy upgrade checking.
The energy upgrade.
So that's all part of that, but.
That's at Essex, that we open at Essex.
That's a brand-new account as well.
Yes, yep. And that'll, that'll go down, that'll be depleted, I would suggest, by March.
Quick one, okay.
I hope by March.
That's elementary school work, Mr. Trump.
That's elementary, town hall and library.
Okay. Yeah, the three buildings that we had agreed to do.
Yep.
And Russell, yours is a citizen as well, right?
Yeah.
You know, I would imagine, if Tom makes that off the sheet, he would, he would see that and would know that, and he probably is in the process of it, I would submit, but we'll check it out any minute.
Let us assume that is correct. Alright. Um, let's see, how much money, what should we say is in the, how much do we have in the general fund? I'm never quite sure which one to look at. 4,950? Four million? 950,000 dollars? Is that what it is?
Yeah, almost, almost five.
Almost, I'm around the five. We spend about a million and a half a month on average, so it seems like we are adequately covered. Alright. We shall thus turn to recommendations of selectmen. Angus, do you have things you wish to share?
I do. Some of which has not been all formalized yet with the Board of Selectmen, but some of which hasn't, all of which is certainly will, appropriate to talk about. Three things. The first is the, let's go with elementary school, the energy project that we were just talking about. In the process of doing the work, they found three return fans, which I'm not a heating expert, but apparently, they move air from the cooler sections of the building back into the system to be heated and then sent back in. They found three that they had not found in their preparation and attempt to budget and prepare the town and Eversource and everyone for this project. One of those was already, is in fact not working. The other two are still working, but they just are not, have not been budgeted for and are not in the current budget to be replaced. They went back to Eversource and told them that they had found these. Eversource said, well, we can, um, we can incorporate them into the project. They will be, uh, the total cost was about eleven thousand dollars for those two, or three fans. Eversource contributed forty percent payback for that, or, or support for that, so the, the cost to the town is, uh, is sixty, sixty-five hundred dollars. We, they need, one of them is broken, so that needs to be repaired. They will contribute considerable amount of savings to the, to the projected savings of, for the heating cost. To ask me to tell you technically why that's the case, I can't, but if we, if we, if you feel like we need to, we can get them back in here. The, the, the bottom line of this is, though, that we have got money in our capital account for the elementary school. Um, the sixty-five hundred dollars, I think, would be best spent out of that account. And if we come back at the end, later in the year, if they overspend, we can pay attention to what we're spending. We've got most of that money budgeted for, but we can pull back on some of it if we need to. And if we can't, we can, that's when we can come back to the town and say, we'd like to move some more money in there. So, at this point, we don't.
Forty thousand, that's what we have in the capital?
Yeah, yeah.
We have capital. We've always put, we always have one.
It is, it is.
We say, we put forty thousand. And he's at the school, that's right. We put forty thousand capital for the school.
Now, that, this will be an interesting exercise. This year, maybe we'll be able to see a little bit, but then, we may be able to reduce that, because an awful lot of that money over the last three years has been spent on the heating system that this is now repairing. You know, we were buying pumps left and right over there in the last two years, and, or not pumps, but valves. And, and that, that, those have all been replaced as a part of this project, so we, we will pay attention to that capital budget over there.
So, we may be able to cut that back a little bit.
I'm hopeful, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's slip at the tongue. If those fans had have failed in the future, we would be paying for those out of our forty thousand. So, in some sense, we are fortunate, you know, fortunate at the final.
That's, that's a hundred percent correct. In fact, the one that's broken would be, it's a fifteen hundred dollar part, and the labor to fix it would be something else, so. And, and I don't see how that number's correct when I say it out loud. That's what they told me, but it can't be, can't be that. If three of them are, are ten thousand. Um, so, uh, we have to replace one of them anyway. It's broken. The other two, we might as well put in there, uh, because they're part of, they are part of the project. And, and my suggestion is that we take it, we instruct them to take it out of the money that's already budgeted for capital improvements over there, and, and pay attention as the year goes on. And Pete does a great job paying attention to that budget anyway, so we should be pretty, pretty tight with that.
So, one fee is fifteen hundred dollars, but the other one?
I have to, I have to back up on that. I did say that, because that's the number that I remember being told, but it makes no sense mathematically. So, it could be, this is one of the smaller ones, and the other two are bigger. I, I can't tell you the details on it.
You've never replaced a fan inside, but working?
I've never have.
It's, it's not a ten-minute job.
I, no, then that's where I think the expense probably is a lot of labor, but I, I don't know, so. Um, so that's, that's the news there. Um, next up is.
We have to take no, we.
We don't take any action.
I don't think we have to take any action unless people wish to put up a resistance, that we shouldn't proceed.
But it, we would only be paying six thousand towards it, and Eversource will address the rest of it?
Well, actually, the fact that we have a construction budget of forty thousand, we would have had to take action or fund it. Uh, the discussion is taken out of what we committed already.
As minority allocated.
That's my suggestion.
As Angus is pointing out, as the year moves on, and things we had contemplated to do with that forty, we could return to the sum. We have to take no action unless anyone wishes to put up resistance. We have to take no action.
Well, put up resistance, I'm not sure that we can. I mean, there is money budgeting, technically, it is, oh, that's our budget, so I guess we can, yeah, yep. But the other idea is, the other, the other side of that coin is, rather than put up resistance, understand that we want, that we need to repair and add money to that, but I don't see that as really necessary at this point.
It's just the word to correct it, capture the resistance, but I don't think we're getting in here unless anyone wishes to.
A resistance refers to whom?
Us, not funding.
Us.
Oh, the board of finance or the town?
Us.
Board of finance has to say yes.
You have no resistance from me.
We have no resistance. That's what I like to hear.
Next up is a.
People riding around town resist.
No resistance.
Those are the other times. This has been a time since I was a kid, huh? Resistance? What's next? Uh, let's talk about the Ventrack thirty-two hundred, two thousand and thirteen snow blower that, um, has become available. And, uh, I would, I would very much like to purchase that, uh, for the community. Uh, it, it will give us an opportunity to keep our sidewalks clear, not just in the immediate vicinity of the town hall and the, and the, um, River Street intersection, but really, all the way from Kirk, from Kirkland Street right through to Union Street. We should be able to clear that in, in, in only a couple of hours. And, uh, I think if we wanna keep, keep in mind that our merchants are open and thrive on people being able to come into their stores, and with the sidewalk clear, it's certainly a lot easier, um, and safer. And that, I think, is, is one of the bigger, bigger issues, um, keeping folks safe. We, we encourage people to walk in our town, and in the wintertime, we have a lot of walkers who are, uh, in fact, I've, I've had to run across the street and help folks try to get from Conover Farms across to, to Adams, um, just because the snow has piled up. And I, I do think that it is, this is, that we can, we can, right now, the, the cost of this is, is around nine thousand dollars. I'm not gonna go any higher than, maybe a few hundred higher than that. We're kind of negotiating that right now.
Who has it?
It's a fellow up, I wanna say it's up near Canton. Privately owned. He bought it from a little old lady in Rochester, New York, actually, a church up in Rochester, New York. They owned two of them and used them for their parking lot and didn't need them, but.
Is that a joke?
No.
It's a snow blower?
It is a joke, but it's not real.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big snow blower. I can show you a picture. What it is, it's got a, it's got an enclosed cap, four wheels, uh, a snow, big snow blower on the front that can either push the snow into a wagon in front or a truck in front of it, and just remove it from the street entirely, which is really what I'm hoping that we can do. Um, or it can just push it out into the road, or push it ahead until you can find somewhere to get it off the road. But, you know, the merchants, just like all of us, the merchants get out and shovel their driveway, shovel their walk, and take care of their stuff, or don't. Um, and if, but if they do, you know, three minutes later, basically, about the same time that you finish, the state goes by with the plows and pushes all that snow back up in front.
Never happens.
No, no. I've been out plowing and gotten it a few times, you know, as hard as you try. But, uh, so, I, I, I think it's a good purchase. I, the board of selectmen, we all agree that it's a good thing to recommend to, for us to do.
What's the name of it?
It's a Ventrack thirty-two hundred. This is a two thousand and thirteen. Uh, we, we did, in fact, take our mechanic up to look at it, and he thinks mechanically, it looks like it's in great shape. Um, it has, you know, a six-year-old snow removal things wear and tear on, a little bit of, a little bit of paint on some of the things on the body, but he thinks it looks in great shape.
What was an old lady doing with it?
Shoveling the parking lot at the church.
Seriously?
Yeah, I don't think it was an old lady. That was a joke.
Oh, it's very literal.
How much are, like, how much are new ones?
New ones are going for thirty thousand.
Thirty, okay.
Wow.
And this is something that we've been talking about, or I don't know that we've been talking about it, but it's been on my radar for, uh, for four years now. Um, because we, the plow that we use is really just a tractor with a small plow in front of it. It doesn't fit in some areas, and it's, it's just not effective, and it's not efficient. This will be, um, you know, we'll store this up at the WPCA and drive it down the road, so we don't have to trailer it in adverse conditions. And it, it's something that I've been mulling, bringing to us to budget, whether we wanna budget for a machine, do it ourselves, or budget to have a private, some, someone come in. But it's important to keep these sidewalks clear. Um, it encourages people to continue to use our downtown, and it allows for people to continue to use our downtown when times are, when weather may not be so inviting.
So, it is narrow enough to fit in the back of a town truck?
It would have to be trailed.
Oh, it would have to be trailed, okay, that's, I, I misunderstood what you're saying.
No, no, we will literally drive it down Winter Avenue on its own.
Okay.
And then, and then start, start with the plow and come on up. I, I would, I would, I like keeping it there, because we don't have to put it on a trailer and drive it down here in conditions that are obviously going to be adverse.
Okay, so you're saying it's kept down there and under its own steam?
Under its own steam, we would drive it down.
Would, would come up to wherever?
Yep.
And then turn around and go back under its own steam?
Mm-hmm. Sorry about that. That was badly defined.
And it's smaller than the current tractor being used?
No.
So, if the tractor doesn't fit, how is this gonna fit?
I know, I know. There's only a couple of spots over in front of Dawn Main where there's a, like, eye wire that comes along. He's gotta kind of wiggle his way around, but you can, you can push the snow blower in, back up, and then go, go around. But it is not smaller. It's, it's, it's bigger.
But not too wide for the sidewalks, considering how.
No, it's, it's the perfect size for, and, and that's a good question. Let's look at, I don't think I have a good picture, and I have only seen it by in this picture, but, um, it's big, and it's not too big to go down the, the four-foot sidewalks on Main Street that are not, you know, on the, on, Jesus, on the, uh, north end of town. It'll drive up the sidewalks.
Because we've got a lot of areas where we don't have a full four feet.
Right. I'm looking right now to find a picture, and we'll see.
Did that mean something?
She was, it was true.
She just kicked, she kicked, I thought she wanted me to say something.
Picking anybody?
Or vote, no. Here's the picture.
So, I mean, it looks like it would fit on a sidewalk, or on the pickup truck. This is the only picture that I have.
And you could turn that hood any way, which way, right?
Yep.
Should project the snow?
Yep, so the snow can be pushed out into the street if the plows are.
Would it be easier just to run wires and heat the sidewalks?
That would be awesome. Remember the fellow who used to walk his barefoot all over the place?
This is a different one, or this is?
No, that is the one.
That's the one.
Is this listed at eleven?
Yeah.
Seen it? The current, what we're using, is that owned by the town or the?
WPCA. The town does not own that.
Which, which I think is interesting, if not important, to decision-making.
Yeah.
If the town says that's our responsibility, which we've been doing it for quite a while, since the elderly housing went in, the town has been doing this, it seems the town should be paying for it, not the, those who fund the sewers.
Yeah, I, I don't, there's any question about that, and there has been, and, and probably will continue to be some, a, a good amount of cooperation between the two entities.
Isn't it the responsibility of the property?
Not in Deep River.
We do not have an ordinance in Deep River. We try, but we do not have an ordinance, yes.
They don't have to shovel their sidewalks?
No.
We're trying not to publicize that, but no. Thank you. No, I'm not, that, that was another joke. Um, no, there is, there is no ordinance in town.
We tried many years ago to pass an ordinance, but they came out of everywhere, pushing it out.
They being the townspeople? Why would they object to that? What if somebody falls on their sidewalk?
I, I, well, I do not, well, I remember, but the last thing people want is to be, suddenly have the police officer knocking on the door and say, you're not, you're not shoveling your sidewalk in a timely manner, and thought it was an overextension of what the town does. This is a small town, and this is the way we've done it, and et cetera. You could sort of go from there, so.
I think it was a couple of years ago when I, I looked to see, because there were a lot of places that were not shoveling the driveways or their, their sidewalks on Main Street, and, um, it was very frustrating.
Yeah.
And so I looked to see where, I didn't wanna go knock down their door without some backup, so I went to the, to look for an ordinance that, that required that, and there is none.
No.
And without one, you, you don't have to enforce it, or you can't enforce it. They don't have to do it.
It would be a pleasantness to having this road where a lot of the kids walk have that cleared as well.
Oh, yeah, well, I, yeah.
Or even on Main Street. We tried walking it one, one day last winter when it was gorgeous out, but it, there was snow.
Yep.
You couldn't.
No.
You either had to walk in the road, or you had to jump over hills and valleys and ice.
I, I think it's a good thing, and I think it will be a positive for, for downtown and for, for all of our citizens. So, my suggestion is that we, uh, we purchase it. We take it from, from our reserve fund.
So, what say you, board of finance? Angus is correct. We would have to take it from the board of, uh, reserve fund. We would have to create a line item in capital for what you thought, snow blower, something, blow, or something like that, but, um, it would, because it's under ten, it is within our jurisdiction. We can make that change ourselves.
Let me, let me ask you a question, one more question. Couple a hundred years ago, when I was a young man doing building maintenance, we had a very nice, large snow blower. Declared a considerable amount of sidewalk and even some parking lot. Would that not be acceptable, rather than, and, and somewhat cheaper than, than this?
A big snow blower? I think, my opinion on that is that it would be, it would be more, it would be more time-consuming. It would be more diffi- difficult.
Certainly, you're not gonna run it from Winter Street all the way up and around. I realize that, but for the, for the downtown area.
I, I don't think it would be as efficient in, in the end to get it done in a time that, you know, most of the, you know, the folks that are out there probably already been out plowing and doing other things during the course of the storm. Maybe not. I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna see some spells, people, different folks driving it. But I don't think, you know, the time that, that this will take to do the Main Street, and, you know, any of these little sides, I think are gonna be such that it doesn't, doesn't make sense to, to bring a big snow, snow blower in and try to do it manually, you know, walk behind it. The other efficiency of this is that it, uh, it's got a dispenser, a bucket behind it that can drop and spread, uh, salt or sand or whatever you wanna do. The milk butters down there. And it is an enclosed cap, so you can be out there in relatively lousy weather and still, still be warm and safe. But I understand what you're saying. You can probably buy a good snow blower for a thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, I'd probably order that.
I don't know.
Three, four, five, you know, we get you a very nice snow blower, including a walk-behind cab. They do make those.
Walk-behind cab?
Yeah, for some reason, yeah. Keep you out of the wind, at least.
Keep you from getting the blowback of the snow.
Yep, that too. Yeah, I had to ask the question.
Yeah, it's a good question. I know, frankly, just it, it did not seem to me that that was the way that I had been thinking about going with a walk-behind at all.
You have to have a place, have you, have you blown a little snow in my day? You have to have a place to aim it and put it somewhere.
Well, you do with this too. The, the thing I like about this is it's big enough of a motor, and I imagine that the push behind, or the walk behind would be too, but to push it forward until you can get to a space that there's a lawn, or drive alongside of it with a truck and throw it into the truck, and then drive it right away. And that's what I like about it, 'cause we can just get the sidewalks completely clear, as opposed to having those mountains with our little alleyway cut through them.
What say you, board of finance?
Um, I, what, what else do you have suggestions?
One other thing that I would like to talk about.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear the whole deal before.
Okay.
Which is, uh, our trees, our highway budget. If you look at our highway budget, you'll see we've, we've spent a lot of money this year already, um, and we have a lot more to spend still on roads, but we keep our trees in our highway, um, maintenance line. Or not, maintenance is not the right word. It's the highway, general road, highway maintenance. Uh, we keep our tree budget in there as well. As you, certainly, the north end of town has been more affected than the rest of town, but there are some large trees all, all around town. Mostly hardwoods. Mostly hardwoods and ash trees that are just dying and, and we cut a bunch last year, we cut into, we took a lot of our just regular road money. And spent it on, on trees. Um, this year we increased what we thought we were gonna use on that. Um, but we're finding, we're, we're just struggling to keep up, they're, they're dying as fast as we can cut them. And I'm asking you to consider, and, and we, this, this is not an emergency right now, we still have money in there, but it will become something that we need to address. And I'd like to get, get it take, I would like very much to get it taken care of now, is to, uh, is to move forty thousand dollars into our highway maintenance line. So that we can, um, we can keep up with keeping these trees, so we can keep our roads safe. Along the way of that, we've had Eversource out there cutting trees like crazy, they'll be back again to, to go down Cedar Swamp. Anything that's near, near the wires, um, we try to, try to have someone else do. Eversource is certainly the most qualified. But we have just got River Road, or not River Road, Westbrook Road has just, we just are really struggling to keep up with, I think will be done, will be done up there within the next few weeks. And then Eversource will be back to cut down a bunch of trees that are in the wires. Got individual trees, one across from, one across from the elementary school that needs to come down, it's just a great big dead oak tree. That's going to drop, then it's on, that's on town property, what we're, what we are doing at this point and. We, we're gonna need to figure out a, a way forward with this is there are a number of trees that are close to the state or to the town property, but not on the town property. Legally, they're not town responsibility, but, you know, um, some of their branches are twelve inches, their branches are as big as trees and, and we need to ensure that they're not falling on town property. And these trees are dying in a, in a manner that's different from how trees normally die, they seem to be almost explosive when they hit the ground, they just.
Cause they're all rounded out inside, they're.
I'm not sure if they are, they're, they're just died in the last few months.
All the ones that I've seen that have come down are rotted to heck from inside, they look healthy on the outside, but they're, they're all rotted inside.
Maples are rough from the inside up, oak's not quite so much.
Now, this is a statewide, um, concern. Just, and I'm, and I'm not asking you to make a decision based on what other communities are doing, Chester added fifty thousand dollars to their budget and I just went back for another fifty for this year. So, um, to the board finance to ask for more. I, I think we have to, we have to do the trees. They're safe, we're, you know, we, we've been fiddling around with that highway budget for the last three years, it's back where it should be. And we're, and we're, we're gonna use every penny of it this year, mostly on roads, but we, we, we have spent already thirty on trees and we have, I, I think we've got another forty or so to spend anyway. Just to get the ones that are dead this year, there will be more dead next year that we'll have to go back and do again.
Those that Eversource cut, that's on their nickel.
Absolutely.
They, they wanna cut them out of the lines, that's, that's not our concern, we don't, we're gonna build back or anything for that.
Nope.
And currently we've spent thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Who does our tree, do we hire?
James Howard does most of them. He cannot, doesn't have the license to, to be close to the wires, you know, there, there are trees that are in that spot that, uh. Eversource doesn't wanna do, they're not close enough, they say ten feet, the trunk of the tree needs to be ten feet from the tree, from the wires. But there are, there are some in that area that are just too close to the wires for him to do safely, so we need to contract with other folks who are, who have the licenses.
He has a bucket, but he just won't touch it.
He should, he's not.
So we're looking to use local?
Absolutely, I always try.
Let's say you board are be supportive of the additional expenditures?
Could we take them one at a time?
I think you should.
And this money is all in, we're taking it from?
The uncoordinated.
Surplus money?
Yeah. And I don't wanna, it's not something that we wanna put, it's in the general fund.
Yeah.
General fund's a better word.
Back to the snow blower, do you, do you think you can get that for nine or, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the conversation is pretty, pretty good, I don't expect it'll be, it might, it might go up to ninety-five, but I'm not gonna go higher than that anyway, just based on what I've seen from them.
Not at the eleven that it's listed for.
No, that's, definitely.
As I understand it, we don't need to do anything about fans.
Say that again?
We don't, we've already discussed fans, we don't need to do anything about them.
Can we put a not to exceed on the?
Fans?
Uh, the snowblower.
Yeah, certainly.
Let me just follow your not to exceed, if we authorized a budget line out for nine-five, I guess I can't exceed nine-five.
Yeah. Yeah, but nine-five has to come from someplace, we've got too many people that are on really fixed incomes.
Correct, it's got, but it's going to come from surplus.
It's gonna come from surplus, which will raise taxes next year, if we use it all up.
That's, that's right, and that's, that's the difficulty for me to come to, to even have this conversation, cause we worked very hard over the last few years to build that surplus where it needs to be. But we also were very lucky last year to, to, to have money kind of that we did not expect pop into that. We don't wanna just squander that, we're not, not even thinking about, these are, these are issues that need to, you know, that I, that I think need to be addressed.
Certainly, these are not what you would call luxury items, tree work and, and.
No.
Snow equipment. Let, let me dig a little bit deeper, broader in finance, um, and, and ask a question. We still have not heard about a fire truck grant.
We have not been told no, but I, I have not seen any new, uh. Awards in the last three weeks, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that we are not, not gonna get that.
How long do they hold you off before they let you know?
I don't know, I, I've never applied for one, I don't know that they do tell you no. At this stage.
Really?
I, I don't know.
Seems very rude, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
I know that in the early stages, they, they, they alert people that you're out. But at this, I don't know.
And there's no contact person that?
Well, I've been contacting, uh. Joe, uh, Joe Courtney's office and, and they haven't, they haven't given us an answer as to whether or not they're done or not, but they're not. And I don't have a direct contact with FEMA, so my only real contact is through Joe's office. They are actually, uh, they're just, there's a, there's a class coming up at the beginning of November about, uh, what. Making applicant, applying for these grants again for either for trucks or for other equipment. And we, we are working with the, the, um, grant writer to try to go back for other equipment that, that we, that we need. Despite a truck, but, uh, Russ, to your point, yeah, I think, I think we need to start thinking that we're going to be buying a, a, a truck. And I think we need to get on top of that, we need to also think that we're going to be funding a firehouse.
Exactly, my point.
Yeah.
And, and, and again, these are not luxury items you're asking for, but neither are the others.
No.
Yeah, those, well, we also made the promise too, then that if the grant did not go through, we would.
You're gonna buy the truck.
We would, we have to buy it.
I don't think we need the truck as much as we need the firehouse, but we do need.
Yeah, that has to pass through the town.
All of it has to pass through the town.
The truck already passed, we already talked about that in the budget for the. On what town meeting, so either they grant it or we buy it, that's what the, what six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for?
Yeah.
Yep. True job. You know, it's, it's probably too early to tell, cause nothing is, is yet drawn out, but my thinking on this is that we will go for. A large loan, a borrow, probably from USDA who seems to have the longest term borrow. And if we can stretch it out to, I, I'm confident we can stretch it out to forty years, and that's where I think it should be. If we can get it further, I, I would like to, I, I, for a number of reasons, the most obvious to reduce the, the payment, but the, uh. A little less obvious is because these are items that are going to be used by this community over for forty, fifty, sixty years. Uh, maybe not the truck, but certainly the firehouse. And, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's wrong to spread that payment out to the people that are gonna be enjoying the benefit of, of that. So, I, I, what I, what I would see, and this is, this is very premature, but I would, there are three major expenses that I see in front of the town right now. The new fire truck, new firehouse, and a possible sewer expansion on Essex Street. All of which would come to, roughly, if the firehouse comes in at three million, um, there would be about four and a half million dollars that we would borrow. Cause we've got the, the sewer expansion and the fire truck to add on top of that three.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
What does that do to the taxes?
Well, if we stretch it out over forty years, that will come in at somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand. Um, which is really, if you look at our past budgets, we, we took that a hundred and forty-one thousand that we've been making payments that have been part of our budget for all these years, we took that out this year. But that would, it would be a sixty thousand dollar increase over that, at, at its highest.
So this is putting it back in, just like we had it all these years, just continuing to pay that amount? Or collect that amount?
But those are things, I mean, that firehouse, and I don't know, we go to the town with those individually or, or, or together as one big borrow. I, I think the one big borrow is the way to go, stretch those out and, and consolidate as much as we can. But, uh, you know, the firehouses, it's, it's cut down twice already at, at referendum. And we've worked really hard to get that down to three million dollars. And, and that needs to be, it needs to get approved.
For those of us who have toured the firehouse.
Yeah.
I was, I was appalled by the condition of the firehouse.
It's in that shape.
I didn't hear what you said to precede this, for those of us who what?
Uh, have toured the firehouse, uh, looked, looked at it in depth and, and in detail.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's an appalling shape. So, I totally, I totally agree.
I don't think there's anybody who wouldn't want a new firehouse that would be safe and accessible and accommodate the trucks and whatnot, but I think that. Responsible, you have to consider too, what is it gonna do to each individual, as Lori said before, many people in our town live on fixed incomes and many, you know, working families, whatever. What does that do to your tax structure? And every time you turn around, your taxes are going up and up and up and up, not necessarily here, but just generally speaking.
You're giving me, you're giving my own line back to me, cause I often say that. But without a place to keep fire trucks, you, you no longer have an emerg, you don't, you don't have emergency services anymore. Emergency services don't benefit everybody all the time, every day, but boy, when you need them, you need them.
Mm-hmm.
And.
I think we need to keep the fire station as a fire station and not a beauty salon. We don't need a fancy, we don't need a fancy, we need a building that will house the trucks.
Destroy the uniforms and the hoses and the bands and whatnot.
You're, you're going to a different place here, you're.
Right, but I, but that will keep the cost down.
Okay.
That's all.
All, all I'm saying is, having that building the way it is.
Oh, yeah, no, it needs to be repaired.
Yeah.
But we just, we can't do it by making it house gorgeous.
All of these, I know, but all of these, that's, that's a different subject.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're looking at.
It is a different subject, it's the next, it's the next big subject that we have to face and we have to face it together and we have to face it, the whole town needs to face it.
I'm thinking a more holistic look at, you know, these, these are not terribly large expenses in the grand scheme of things, they are and they aren't, you know. Ninety-five hundred dollars for a snow blower, if you came to us today and you said this is the only thing that's gonna happen this month and probably next month too, I probably wouldn't care. But then you add forty thousand in for trees and you think about all these other things and I start getting kinda skeevy about all the things.
It's a button, I spoke about this at, at length before bringing it on here, because it is, it's a, you know, we. I don't know about everybody around this table, but I, I argue with people about thirty-five hundred dollars in taxes or whatever it is. It's, every little bit adds up to our whole budget. And this is, this, this is, it's a lot of money. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be asking for it if I didn't think it's going, it's something that is going to, to either keep the town safer. Or benefit the town in a way, I mean, I, you know, our merchants, they don't work only from May to September. They need to stay open all the time, we need to help keep them there, um, and I think keeping the sidewalks clear helps that, it also keeps people safer. These are all things that I think we need, or I wouldn't be here asking for them. And, and I'm hoping that you think you agree, if you don't agree, it's okay, we'll, we'll make do.
I was just looking at a, a prior discussion, you had said sixty-eight for the fans, not sixty-five?
There.
Sixty-five.
You had said sixty-five, you and I had chatted and I sent a note to the board.
Oh.
It was a prior estimate, approximately sixty-eight, it, it's all coming out at forty, so wait till.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now.
Uh, I could go check my email, I, I have the, the exact number in my computer.
I imagine we need a number on the energy, since we've got forty there, we'll take it out of that.
It's, it's below seven, it's either between sixty-five and sixty-eight.
So the forty, the fan is already essentially addressed, it's not, we're not putting up money for it, the money is there, we're using money that's in their capital fund.
It's already budgeted.
The snow blower has to come out of a reserve.
You have to create a line and then have it come out of our.
And the trees, the, would be, I think you said moving forty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yes.
From where?
General fund.
General fund.
To the, uh, road maintenance.
Highway.
Line.
And what general fund are we referring to, there's a general fund on Tom's report and there's a general fund in our revenues. Tom's is four million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But that's just the amount of money we have at the moment.
And the general fund in our revenues is nine million, seven hundred and seven thousand dollars?
Now you're getting confused with taxes, uh, I do not remember, our general fund is approximately, what is it, a million? It's the excess dollars that we have collected over the years, and I forget the number, it's a million, two million, one.
So it's not what's on this report?
Thanks, sorry, I don't remember yet.
And I could do a look for it, but yeah.
About a million dollars?
Yeah, roughly.
That we have collected over the years. I can find it here. In July. In July, seven to be the one. In July, I estimated that our surplus was a million seven. Which is about nine, ten percent of our budget.
I don't think that was, no. That's nine, that's ten percent, right?
Close to nine or a thousand dollars at the end of last year.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And we all take great comfort, that number's getting bigger, closer to where we want, so we would be, if we move forward, there would be, you should assume that fifty thousand will leave that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if we have an eighteen million dollar budget, that's about, we have a surplus of about ten percent. A little less than ten percent.
That's, I think that's around a stick to nine hundred thousand. Because I was thinking a little less than nine, than ten.
How about, if we talk about trees for a moment. Do we have a choice on asking for forty? Those trees are coming down. Falling down. Are we going to have to address them whether the money's in the budget or not?
Oh, as far as I'm concerned, we, as far, I don't think we have a real choice. We need to cut them. We either take it out of, you know, find it somewhere else in the existing budget. But even that involves moving stuff around, so...
And trees are very expensive to take down.
Trees are crazy expensive, I never...
We had, just had some price because our house is literally surrounded by trees, like five feet away trees.
Mm-hmm.
They are extraordinarily expensive.
Yeah.
For one tree.
Yep. There's a tree in front of Bill's house.
Can't you just tie a rope at the top and chop it off?
No, you won't. Give names, I've hired people who do that and don't. My neighbors have lost power in the process. But yes, be careful when you get to that tree.
And that's all they lost?
Yeah, some of these trees are big enough and tall enough where they've got to bring a crane and have to take the tops down before they can drop the rest of the tree. Yeah, there are trees, there are four, five, six thousand dollar trees.
Yes.
And there's a tree in front of Bill's house. It's not dead yet, but he wants it down. And that's a ten thousand dollar tree.
Chewy.
Yeah.
Bill, Bill. Who does he think he is?
He's Bill.
Tell him to get the beavers that are on Meadowlands Road.
Yeah, that's right.
Just get rid of his trees.
I don't even start on beavers.
Well, do you want to...
Are these, these trees for this fall, next spring?
These trees will be from now until next spring. We're going to cut as many as we can now. We will get more probably in December. And then probably more in January. Just because of scheduling, you can't get here and get them all at once.
Oddly enough, it's tree cutting season in the cold weather because that's when the leaves are gone and it's a lot easier to cut a tree.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's also less easy to distinguish the new dead ones from the...
You've got more left.
Yeah. You've got more than that.
Silence is not an answer, gang.
Are we taking a vote or are we still discussing?
If somebody could make a motion, whatever.
So we are looking at forty-nine thousand dollars?
To fund...
To fund the truck, the snow blower?
Forty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Forty-nine-five?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. We may have spent all of that nine thousand.
They're two different lines. I would recommend two different motions, but that's just me.
Correct. You raise an interest, but yes, we would have to create a new line of capital for the snowplow. I think in the way Angus actually phrased it, he wants to increase the current budget line item for highways. Would you feel more comfortable if we created a tree?
A tree line?
Yeah, a tree line, that's correct.
That's, that's fine to do that. It's always been, it's just always been part of the highways.
And it, and it does a couple of things if you, if you feel more comfortable. If we don't spend it, it's there available to you. And we know next year when we put the budget together, we just don't take that line item and increase it by something. We could hold a hangus to it, no. I don't know, does that give you any more comfort or less comfort? Does it make life more cumbersome? I don't, I don't know.
No.
I think it makes it more clear as we go forward, as future...
And the short from Chester is that this, and your statement is the same. This is a real issue with the rest of the state. So maybe we should budget for it so citizens know they're paying X amount of dollars.
Yeah, I think, I think without this issue of the dying trees, the ash and the oak and all that's happening, I think it was fine in that, because it was just something that incidentally the trees would come down and you'd take care of trees and try to keep the lines clear. We have put a big effort in trying to keep our lines clear, whether it's us or ever source. And it has made a difference. But I think now, because of the fact that there is so much money being spent on these trees and they are an issue that is going to continue at least for a nice couple of years, I think it is an idea, a good idea to put a tree line, tree line in there.
Tree line.
Don't we have a tree person?
We do have a tree person, yes. And he works hard to ensure that the trees are really dead. And we have taken, we've taken some trees that are, that are not dead, but the tops of them are. And they probably will be dead next year, but we've taken the tops off because that's what we can do and hope that they live, but... It's really a struggle to prioritize, you know, for which...
Okay. Should we stare at each other a little bit longer or will someone say, I'll make a motion and no one will second?
I will make a motion that we take, put forty thousand dollars into the highway maintenance budget from our, remove the forty thousand dollars from our general fund into the highway maintenance budget for the removal of trees.
Well phrased. Now you have chosen to put it into highways and not deal with the separate line item. It's the way you phrased it, it just...
Is that what we'd want to do? Separate line item?
Would you...
Rephrase?
Yes, please. Into a separate line item.
Okay, so how do, I'm not...
You're going to take...
I'm removing my motion.
Consider it done. Laurie has magic fingers. It is done.
So, I make a motion that we take forty thousand dollars from our highway maintenance, from the general fund, and put it into a new line item in our budget for tree removal.
Correct.
Excellent.
We will have to go to a town meeting for this, by the way. So keep your agendas loose. We're not allowed to do anything greater than ten, so we will have to take this to town to be approved of the town, so...
For tree maintenance?
Tree maintenance is a...
And I actually think it's, I'm sorry, we have to second your motion.
Because the vast majority of it will be for removal of trees.
All right, we have a proposal on the table. Does anyone wish to second that proposal, that resolution?
I'll second it.
Thank you, all right. Anyone now that is second, does anyone wish to discuss it in detail?
I can even talk my own name.
It seems we broke the rules and discussed it already, so... All right, all those in favor, fifty, forty thousand from the general fund and moving it to a new line item referred to as tree removal. Please say aye.
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 Those against?
Aye.
You're against? Okay, there you go. It passes. All right, we're making a lot of headway here this evening, folks. That leaves a snowplow question opened.
Ventrack thirty-two hundred.
Twenty thirteen, low miles, needs paint. Angus is asking for a resolution to allow him to proceed to acquire a snowplow at an amount not to exceed nine thousand, five hundred dollars. We would take that out of the general fund also. Is anyone willing to put forth a resolution on that?
I will make a motion then, that we allocate ninety-five hundred dollars to purchase a Ventrack thirty-two hundred snow blower from the year two thousand thirteen. And the money will come from our reserve fund.
All right, we have a resolutions. Anyone wish to second that resolution?
And you want that as an amount not to exceed ninety-five?
Sure, is that what you guys wanted?
Yeah, so that's fine.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Does anyone wish to discuss it? Or have we exhausted this discussion?
We're exhausted.
We're exhausted.
At least we're not resisting. All those in favor of moving nine thousand up to, not to exceed nine thousand, five hundred dollars from our general surplus to acquire a snowplow, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I know.
Aye.
Two ayes?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
So we have a tie? So this is it?
We have to break it.
We get a new, a new snowplow.
Thank you, I understand everybody's concern on this. I share, but...
And my rationale is, I appreciate all the surplus, but we have obligations and we have got to pay the things to accomplish that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Think the trees are a public safety issue. So I think that has to be dealt with. The snowplow, maybe we could, you know, wait on that.
And it is, it's a slippery slope on the plow, but I think we need a new one.
A slippery sidewalk.
We may not get it, we're in negotiations. It may not end up...
We may not, it's a good, excellent.
And if you get it, you may not use it. On the other hand, we use it a lot.
And in light of what's yet to be presented to the town, I think using ninety-five hundred dollars from a general fund for a snowplow to keep the roads, the sidewalks clear is a positive move rather than having to maybe do it two years from now because the one from the WPCA...
That's correct.
Isn't working anymore. Then you now have even greater costs which are going to present to the town. It's sort of like taking small bites of things rather than a large chunk.
Yes. Yes. That ends off the excitement of Angus's presentation.
Yes, it does.
Would you mind commenting on your forward thinking on roads and what might happen with roads in the future?
We don't have to stay where they are.
And we'd like to improve, continue to improve them. And we have put a pretty concerted effort into doing that. And as such, we've, we're spending a lot of our money. Right now, we have not received all of the town acreage money that we've been promised from the state.
For last budget year.
For this year. We should have received a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-eight thousand dollars now already. And we should receive another ninety-eight thousand dollars in the spring. That money is tied up in a game of chicken between the governor's office and the legislatures. It's tied up into tolls and all of that kind of thing. It should not be related, it is not related, but it is. And you can, currently, you could probably speak to it better than I can. I've contacted the governor's office and he said, call your legislators. I've contacted the legislators and they said, call your governor. And we are not, we're not alone. All the towns in Connecticut have not received this money. That said, I expect we're going to get it. And that's just a long way around to the answer Bud's question is. I am not certain, but we are, we are going to be very tight. A lot of our money is spent already this year on road. We've got, West Bridge is in desperate need of repair. And that will be done within a few weeks. We've got, let's see, the other section, the end of Bushy Hill is falling apart almost as fast as the trees are dying. So a small section of that will be paved. And that's, that's another, I think that came to about sixty-seven thousand dollars. That leaves us with about one hundred thousand dollars left in our roads money at this time of the year. That is, that's tight, it's going to be tight. Because we've got work we're going to have to do in the spring and we don't know what's going to happen with the rest of the, the rest of the season. So I'm just concerned. It's not, we're not here asking for any more money and I'm hoping that we're not going to. But we may have to. And I just want to try to keep everyone aware that our highway department is working as hard as we can. We're not patching pavement to try to ensure that we don't have to hire and enlist and spend more. And we may have money, you know, if we have a good year, there may be, a hundred thousand may be sufficient to, to still have money left to do money in the, to do paving in the spring.
When you say a good year, you mean snow plowing?
See, yeah. Well, that, that money is not used for snow plowing.
Okay, so I'm not sure what you mean, but we have...
The roads, the roads stay in good shape. We don't have to get out and hire someone to come in and do some patching and all that kind of thing. And we just took care of the trees and that kind of, that really is part of that same line. It's not anymore, but it was. So I anticipate that we're going to be fine. But in conversation with Bud, we are, we are tight, you know, and a lot of towns are telling me, well, just, you know, you're doing it in the spring, you're going to get your money started in July. I have no interest and I have no intention of plowing roads with money that we don't have yet. You know, which is where the town acreage thing gets in the way. So in conversation with Bud, we meet at least once a week to talk about how great things are in town. It also comes along that money's tight right now on our road budget. And that's because we were, while it was late in getting done, we were very aggressive on paving roads this year. And it's where we should be. Just, it just seems early to be where we are.
I assume we'll talk about roads as the year goes on?
We certainly will. And I, like I say, I'm hopeful and I don't anticipate coming back. And I don't expect that I will get money unless there's, that we are able to all take a ride out and see what they're talking about. But just to keep, I think Bud was just asking me to express my concern to all of you.
All right, we'll look at the financials. The only other, we can side with you, you want to make a brief or not? Angus and I are members of a task force that was created at the Region Four to make proposals on how they should address capital going forward. We met last night for the first time. And we met last night for the first time. There was lots of interesting comments being made, some of which were even relevant to what we were there to talk about. But, and while I meant to bring a smile to your faces, there is a lot of people on this committee, and I assume that is reflective, like, that have curiosities about how the school works. Some of those curiosities may go up to anger. And many of them came out last night. We will work our way through some of those, I'm sure as the committee goes through, but...
Could you be a little bit more definitive? What are curiosities?
Well, the one I'm trying to, I assume all of us have been reading the paper and found out that the school did not, may not have had the authority to buy that property. And a quick review of some of their history would indicate there is other events like that that they did not have in place. They did a quick, Brian the new superintendent did a very brief summary of some of the capital improvement. It got, it was a very convoluted conversation. It was done quickly, convoluted, but there are just several mistakes made, serious mistakes, at least listed that in the past on how they acquired some things and how they've been keeping their books, so I think we will be addressing some of those. And we will, and I will share with you as we go through. And I'll let you know these meetings, there's always, there were several members of boards of finance from other towns that were there, so if you wish to come, you'll be invited to go.
I'll send out the agenda.
There are public meetings, so certainly if you feel you want to come, you should come. It's, you know, there's not, like most things, there's not a lot of room for dialogue. It's, it should be pretty focused. And I'm hopeful that it is pretty focused and we get to, to how, that it's going to move forward. I don't believe that this is a task force that's put forward to say, to investigate errors. I think that investigation has been done. What we're trying to do now is to try to figure out how we can prevent any of these mistakes from happening again and do a better job of keeping our books in order. Because that, from what I get out of this, is that that is what happened, that there was a, there was a big borrow fifteen or twenty years ago for school. That construction loan got confused with, with other uses once the construction ended, and they continued to use that account, and the bookkeeping just didn't, didn't mesh. They assumed that there was money here when it was really over here. They just need to do a better job, tighten up, tighten up their books.
So is this task force then to develop a plan for, what is it, Region Four, or the supervisory board, to go forward in terms of what they're doing with schools?
No.
I'm not sure what happened.
Only, only, only capital. This task force is put together to, how we can ensure for the community that the Region Four offices are managing their capital expenses properly and documenting their capital expenses properly moving forward.
That's my impression of it.
That's part of the process as well, because it sounded like there were, you know, there was irregularities.
I think that with proper bookkeeping, those irregularities would not have happened because they would have known that money was not there.
But don't they have a financial officer?
They've had at least three financial officers, I think maybe four, since this began. This is a fifteen-year-old problem that we're only recognizing now because suddenly they're, frankly, we're only recognizing now because of the visibility of the, the paving of the road and the purchase of the property. If that had not come up, we would never, we wouldn't be talking about it. I applaud the first, the superintendent for, for grabbing a hold of this, really in his first month on the job, and trying to get this so that it straightens out where we are.
And I thought it was something that asked us what we're going to do here.
I can imagine that he does.
It was quite a presentation that he made at the other meeting, that I went to, that he went through all of that, trying to explain it so that we could understand where the problems, when it started.
Yeah, I commend the group that chose him. He seems to be a very good choice thus far.
Does anyone have any questions? How much time do you wish to spend on the budget through October that was sent to you Monday or something? You have any questions?
I couldn't get it. I couldn't open it.
Couldn't open?
No, no. I sent her an email and she said she had problems.
Mine opened.
Yeah, mine didn't open, so I could never do it.
No copy?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have no clue what it says.
I'll tell you what, let's spend, I'll tell you what, let's spend a few minutes. I do not see anything particularly troublesome. First item is selectmen. I just, if you remember, in last year's budget, no, in this year's budget preparation for last year, we discussed Angus's desire to have an economic development commission, and we put five thousand dollars. They have not spent any money, but that is...
They are spending it.
They are spending it.
Yeah, spending it.
Okay, and, well, let's, let's do it again. We are in what, the fourth month, which means that we should spend about thirty-three percent of everything, leaving sixty-seven percent left, and I think most of everything sort of fits well within that criteria.
Bud, what about all the ones that still have a hundred percent of their budget left? Is that the expectation that that's all going to be spent?
Well, that is a good thing to catch. You would think by now we would have had dollars, but that is the first one I can see, the hundred percent is the Economic Development Commission, and Angus is indicating that.
There's the grant writer.
And it's the grant writer, and Angus tells me he's coming in too.
He's not going to really start working until November or something.
Here are lots of them with hundred percent.
There is, isn't it?
Yeah, there's three, three thousand.
Yeah, the grant writer said he, for the fire department, unless we got it, he wasn't going to be paid for that particular grant. But if he's doing more grant work, we can take the money from there.
Well, we actually created in this year's budget, thirty thousand dollars for that part of that. Angus has, and I actually sat in a part of it, the elections group, who, if you remember, last year went over, but they seem to be in fine shape right now, but...
They're the ones that wanted the boxes, the metal boxes or something?
They wanted the box.
A lot of money last year. And they still do.
Even though they got a nice one. It's not fire group.
It's not the bucks that they need.
It's not fire group, I know. Sorry, we didn't have that in my basement.
I wanted to be with them when we're not in the middle of budget preparation, just to let them know that, that we're paying attention, that things have changed in that office. The requirements of that office are much more extensive as far as training goes, time spent. And if you remember, we've been overs, we've overspent that line at least the last two years. And, and I'd like to get a better handle on how we budget, because I don't, I don't think it's because they're, they're mis... I just don't think it was budgeted properly for, for the demands of the office right now.
Here's an interesting one, the tree warden fees mileage, he hasn't spent any of it. Twenty-five hundred dollars budgeted, he hasn't been anywhere in his car?
He has. He hasn't billed us for it yet.
Sticks his bike or something?
No, no. He's a skinny guy, but he just has not billed us for it yet. I think you'll see the same thing with inland welllands.
Planning and zoning has four budgets that nothing has been spent from?
I don't know.
I mean, that's just curious, what happens to all that money if it's not addressed?
Parts on clerical has not been billed yet. Printing expenses, I guess they haven't had to notify, put anything in the paper for their decisions or their meetings coming up. Engineering, we haven't had any reviews, or we haven't been billed yet, and same thing with training.
And engineering, you trust is a pretty large number.
Yep. That's dependent on whether or not we have any, any activities, any real subdivisions or things like that that need to be reviewed.
If you look at town hall operation back on page one, there's sewer fees. Sewer fees are due this month. We budgeted seven thousand, and that is for all town buildings, including our, our fire department. We've spent forty percent of that, I assume that that is an adequate dollar amount left. It's just low, just comparatively low.
That is, yeah, and that is all one payment. What, what that doesn't include, or what we budgeted for but didn't need to, was the current comments.
Oh, okay. Town clerk, did you see Amy is over in the land, land index? She has put us on notice that that was going to happen.
What is that? Is that, that micro fee or whatever she does?
Excellent question.
No, well, yeah, it probably, probably is, but this particular purchase was for, she needed binders for, for her archives.
I was taken a bit surprised, and I have not got a chance to check into it, that we have paid twelve thousand dollars for our auditor already.
They have begun.
We have, I mean, they're coming in, they've already come in, they're starting to do work, so I was surprised.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised.
We are getting billed.
Not catching too many other things, I shall say. There is the, the computer service, you and I chat. We've budgeted twenty-two-five under special services for everyone to catch up with me, and we've overspent that. Is that a one-time-a-year fee, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is, that's overspent because of a conversion fee for an upgrade that the BMSI is doing.
And just knows the, we pay Essex to use their, their dog, what do we call it, dog run, I guess is the proper phrase, and we pay them, I guess we've paid them already, four thousand seven hundred dollars, something like that. There's some minor dollars there in case we take in dogs and have to treat them or something.
What page are you on?
I am on page, I just left page two. I'm heading on to page three. Planning and zoning officer is eighty-four, so we have an opening in planning's opening, planning and zoning. Kathy left, if you remember. Angus, do you think we'll find savings there with her leaving, or?
We, we will find savings. Kathy had a very nice contract, and the new enforcement officer's contract is not as, as generous with certain things. So we will find some savings, but it will be, I don't think it will be savings that is going to be significant.
Do we have a new enforcement officer?
Um, I believe, I was not at the last planning and zoning commission meeting, but the board of selectmen interviewed her and extended a contract to her. The planning and zoning commission, I, I think appointed her last Thursday, so she should begin work. She, I think she, what she told us is she needed a couple of weeks to, to give to her a current employer. And I expect that, I'm hopeful that her first office, if everything went well Thursday night, her first day will be November fourth.
She signed a contract? She's a contract employee, actually?
She has a contract. She's, the planning and zoning, not a lot of folks are aware of it, but it's a yearly contract. I was not aware of it until now. It is, it's supposed to be renewed and reappointed once a year.
Is that just tradition for Deep River, or is that very standard?
That's statute.
That's statute? Statutes are good. If you go to employee benefits, we have made a fairly substantial contribution into our pension plan, if you were wondering. All those dollars are gone. I'm just arbitrarily catching things alive. Anything that does not meet my sixty-six remaining criteria, I sort of flag. Looks like the police department has bought some form of uniforms, so barely down. And fire department seems to be fine.
How come the resident trooper hasn't taken, been paid?
They get billed. This is, this is a constant issue with us on this, on budgeting. She is here, working hard, they just have not billed the town, so. That's why you see nothing coming in.
We will see some, some substantial savings. The, I don't have terminology out of the tip of my tongue right now, but we, we were paying, the amount we're paying is eighty-one, we only are paying eighty-one percent now. We just got that renewed from the state, so we're not paying eighty-five.
Oh, really?
Ninety-five, or the hundred that they've talked about, we're paying eighty, eighty-one percent. So that's a good savings.
Fire, again, fire department?
That just happened today.
That is good. The fire department, everything seems to be fine in the fire department, just glancing at the numbers. We have made a contribution to the incentive program, and we have paid the premiums on the supplemental insurance. We have paid valley shore communication. That is a one-time or two-time, we pay them twice a year, right? And if you glance, if you go down the highway department, Angus has already commented on this thing, we have spent a fairly substantial amount of dollars in the town aid road maintenance. And while we have spent a lot of dollars out of that, we have not received with this promise to us from the state.
That's habit. You know, that book is usually here, and we spend that money first, so that our, our regular, our own money gets spent last. That was just habit.
All right, so this is a good place to ask this question, but the salt and sand and storm budget, if we don't spend all of that money that we budgeted, what happens to that money? Does it go into that contingency fund, the general fund?
It's already in the unappropriated general fund.
It's already in there?
It's already there. We draw from that to pay everything. So it's not...
I might have answered that differently. We have budgeted, and if we don't spend the money, it would be surplus at the end of the year, which would go into the...
Surplus, but it's not coming out of any account?
No, but it's there that we budgeted for, and people have been...
It's already there, and if you don't spend it?
It stays there. It doesn't go from, it doesn't go from this account to this account, it stays in that account. We just don't spend it out.
And so at the end of the year, you don't think it becomes part of the budget to a surplus that adds to the... Which I think is the question, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Well, yeah, it does.
No, it would.
Yeah, it's considered surplus because we didn't spend it, but it's not that it's coming out of a separate account.
No, it's there. We've already budgeted for it. Money's been paid from the town to supplement it.
It's budgeted for that line item.
So let's say there's five thousand dollars left of it. Where is that five thousand dollars going? Does it just stay in that account? So next year when we set the budget, we set it five thousand dollars less, because we already have five thousand dollars there? Okay, that was my question.
No.
And we start every budget, we're into, yeah.
And that overage goes to what?
Surplus.
Okay.
But it's, it's not that we're physically moving things from this account to this account. We just pay from.
Goes to surplus, and then next fiscal year, you re-up whatever the amount is.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Figure it out.
Good, good, good. All right. Out there waste removal, you'll see that most of those numbers are recycling salary. Remember, the concept is we are going to hire somebody who will, in essence, be a public, public information type officer, but we have not moved forward on that one, so therefore no expenditures like that. Assistant, there is someone out there that is an assistant transfer station operator. And he's been there since, since I should have, been there since September, so we certainly have not incurred many dollars, but there is someone there. And you will get him a house or something. He sits in his truck a few times. I run into it.
Is that Rick?
Yeah.
He's on my stretch.
Is it? He shouldn't. He's on his stretch, too.
Yeah, he is, yeah. Because I have all my stickers in the back window, so it's not, they're not really, maybe stopping.
They stop you, really? Oh, good. Yes, that is what we're...
And I told him, I think that's great.
Hopefully everyone will agree with that. Anyway, any other items, anyone I want to chat about, speak? Municipal library, since they have always been a, a source of curiosity. Their, their salaries seem to be on budget. If you remember, we budgeted thirty-nine thousand that they use for programs and books, et cetera. We give that to them in July, so that is why you see zero there. Parks and Recs is sort of worthy of a conversation. Notice there is a substantial amount of, I believe, left in the summer program salary, lifeguard salary, summer youth program expenditures. We, we're certainly way past someone going to the beach and needing a lifeguard, so those dollars will be used next June, I guess.
Yeah, I was, I was curious if there were that high.
And debit field, do we perceive this to be an accurate one? Debit field, which has, is water, it looks wonderful. We say we, there is no water that has been spent down there in this budget. That seems to be an oddity.
It makes no sense to me, because we've been running this very good, so I think she just needs to figure out why.
And you see with political subdivisions, we pay them relative, almost in July, once we pass the budget, we send those dollars out, so. And going down to capital, which is always a worthy of a pause. Does anyone remember what we budgeted thirty-five for the fire department for?
That was the combination of item sixteen for this, ten for that, five for that.
Was that the new uniforms?
Yeah, uniforms and the equipment. I'd have to go back.
What was the uniforms?
Not uniform. Well, no, there were a couple, there were some new guys.
There's, there's new members, and they needed...
New equipment?
New equipment.
Well, I thought we had, we set up last year in last year's budget, we actually had a line item for that.
Yeah, we did that last year. We appropriated money for them, for their new uniforms and all of that. What we, this, this money is, I don't have the specifics.
Is this one of the fans or something, like they did same...
No, that's what I thought it was. They, they came to us and said they needed things for trucks and for, well, the trucks things we...
I do remember that. I do remember that. They need new tires and things like that. I thought we had to, oh, and maintenance, we had to do that last year.
Maintenance, we did, we did last year. But this was other things, new, new items that I, that I don't have, and did not get a response yet, so.
Whenever those numbers are...
I went up to talk with Kathy about it, and, and we did have a lot of notes, but not, not detailed items of what they were. And there was a question at some point during the budget process whether it should stay fire stations or fire equipment. But I don't have the answer for that right now.
So they haven't spent half of it yet, so. Here's one that I believe to be a, a question. We have been putting aside dollars to pre-fund revow. We have put aside twenty-five, if you remember that. There's actually an expenditure that's here that we think is a, we think is wrong. We should still be accumulating. But those folks are in, in office?
What she told me today is that she has made, she's gotten a bill... She, what she told me today is that she has made, they, she's gotten a bill and paid it from them. They're, they're in town, they've been going around taking pictures and doing a lot of the field work. But I wouldn't have thought it would've come out of that line, so.
I wouldn't have thought it would either. It seems to me it should be an expense in Robin's budget, um...
Isn't it? With audits?
The revow, I think that's in the assessor's budget this year.
Nope, it's not.
Because she didn't ask, put it in there, and I thought it was all going to happen next year. All right, so...
No, no, we knew that there was going to be some expenditures this year. The, the bulk of that will be next year. But there, there is, there are expenses this year.
All right, let's chat with her. It seems to me we should be putting that in her budget and taking it out of this. Okay. Which we've never set up a special fund for, but nevertheless, okay. Uh, elementary school roof, thirty thousand. Uh, we have not done anything on the school roof. And, uh, if you remember, we have budgeted twenty thousand dollars to pay for architecture work done at the fire department. And there is a small two thousand, three hundred dollars taken out of it, leaving seventeen-six. But, um, I believe there will be charges coming from that.
There won't be one anymore, yeah. We've got, we're, we have a pretty, pretty darn close to a finished plan. And that will go to be, uh, to get a real estimate on it from, from a real construction company as opposed to just a, just a, I guess. And, um, and then we'll be able to move it forward. You know, we'll be back here with a plan. I would hope that we're here, back here next month.
Next month?
Yeah, with, with a plan, just so everybody can see it, with an expense, projected expense.
And I don't know if anyone looked at revenue. It's not too much exciting in the revenue, other than I was struck how much property, current property tax we have collected. There is forty-five rounding, forty-five percent of current revenues are left. I mean, that sort of makes sense, you pay half of it, a little bit more in July, but, uh, best laid plans don't always work out that well, so, um, so, yeah. Property taxes revenue seem to be coming in strong. Any other questions that anyone would like to pursue? Have we left anything unturned? I don't believe so. With that in mind, can we have a recommend, uh, can someone propose that we all go home?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, first and second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see who, uh, who will say.